Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. It is September the 5th of 2023. This is Tuesday. It is 2:00 and City Council is convening in open chambers and open session. We will begin this meeting today. If you'll give me just a minute, we'll get any citizen comments we have. As a reminder, according to Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding an agenda item, they will complete a sign up form no later than 2:00 PM and then they will have the opportunity to speak on an agenda item. As a reminder, if you have signed up for a citizen comment, as you step forward when your name is called, if you would please give your name as well as your address and then you will have three minutes to make a statement. At two and a half minutes, Mr. Jimmy over here will give you a nice little bell and then at three minutes, he will give you a double bell. All right? All right, there are no citizen comments at this time. Before we begin with our regular agenda and our consent agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sheila Patterson-Harris, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say publicly and particularly to the staff of the great city of Lubbock, Texas, USA, to the mayor and Mr. Atkinson, City Manager, everybody, and your part in and recognition of the TJ Patterson Memorial Plaza. From the Patterson clan, we are deeply appreciative of what you've done and please know that it will never go unnoticed because it means so much to us that it was thought enough of my dad. And I just wanted to say that out loud so that everybody could hear just how special that was and has been to us. So thank you so much and I appreciate it from the bottom of the Patterson clan hearts. We say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, now we will move to the consent agenda. Today, we have item 2.1. That's an ordinance on Amendment 34, amending the 2023 budget for municipal purposes respecting the Public Safety Capital Projects Fund, providing for filing, providing for a savings clause. Do I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. And just for purposes of the record, we do have Ms. Joy. She is available from the eye in the sky, so everyone will know when they hear her. She is with us today. All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye. Ms. Joy, did we get a response?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. 2.1 carries 7-0. All right, now we will move to our regular agenda. This is items 3.1 through 3.6. And before we begin into the agenda, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. A day I think we've long awaited. We're almost to the end of your budget process. So your action today will be to conduct three separate public hearings followed by appropriate action items for your consideration. To begin, I will walk us through a summary version of where we stand. This is completely updated based on every comment that we've had and every change that we have made to date. So, starting with the overview, of course, property tax. The tax rate will capture the new growth and development. The change in maintenance and operation allows 2.98%. So we've had a lot of discussion about what's the rate number and the penny number and the percents. 2.98% is really your change there. Your debt portion of the rate, it does have a slight increase. That, of course, is we have drawn down now, year one of the 2022 street bond. I think for sales tax, probably the most important line on there is to look at the very last bullet point, the one that says your fiscal '24 collections are budgeted at $98.1 million. That's 8.2% over your budget for the current year, but the operative number there is it's 2.5% over what we call the end of year forecast. As we've talked about from the beginning, sales tax in Lubbock is fine. It's good. It is no longer increasing the way it has, but rather it is coming down pretty flat. It is flat above the line. So as long as we stay above that line, we're good, but we don't have the ability to make the very large increases for the following year that we've enjoyed for the last five years. So for general fund, that is your big revenue change. Moving over, talk about rate changes that are proposed in the budget, beginning with stormwater. Stormwater is recommended to have a 60 cent reduction on the tier one and then that pro-rates up as the stormwater charges go up. There is no change proposed to wastewater. There is a 25 cent or one quarter per month change to the base rate in water and then that pro-rates again based on the larger meters, as well as a slight change in the volumetric component of water. And we have not made a volumetric change to water in a number of years. Solid waste, we are recommending $1 per month change on residential, 25 cents per ton at West Texas Regional Disposal Facility, the large landfill at Abernathy. And note, that is not a charge that our residential customers pay. That is for other haulers or commercial waste that is coming in across our scales. For Kalici Canyon, our smaller landfill, the one that's closer to town, the one that is what we call construction and demolition debris, $1 change. We have made two methodology changes to the budget and just want to be sure we have those on the table. The transfer to Market Lubbock, Inc. is now set to transfer a budgeted dollar amount rather than so many pennies or portions of pennies off of your tax rate. That number has moved up and down over the years. This year, we bring to you a budget at a dollar amount. So you see that as change number one in methodology. Number two, hotel occupancy tax. That has historically been allocated on a percentage basis. It is also what produces all of the true ups that you are used to seeing. We did some July, one in August. There will be more coming to finish this year as we get late into the fall. Staff has prepared this budget to where your hotel occupancy tax allocation is a budgeted dollar amount rather than a percentage. So what that will do, will transfer collections or collections will be transferred based on the actuals. Any collections over budget will go into a hot hotel occupancy tax. It will go into a hot reserve fund. That reserve fund is only available for appropriation by this city council. So that will be there for future projects. It could be any one of the groups that we fund. It could be a city project, but it has to be eligible for the hot rules and it has to come out only on this council's approval. Any questions on those? Okay, I'll move on. Talk about some staffing changes. On the left side, you see where we are staffing changes to meet demand, so these are additions. Couple that I'll call out, you see 18 new for Lubbock Fire Rescue. 15 of those are Fire Station 20. And of course, Fire Station 20 was step one of the budget amendment that you just considered. Three are to reduce overtime callback. Six Lubbock police officers, four more public health people, eight Lubbock Power and Light. But if you go over to the right side of the page, you see our offsets. So eliminated positions, positions moved, so seven of the meter technicians that today are under LPNL's payroll will move to water and wastewater. That is what those individuals do. Net change year over year is plus 14. So that is the total change to your city staffing over the course of the year. Couple of other highlights, we're moving into capital. Council, we're proposing $13.5 million for your street maintenance program for fiscal year '24. That's a million and a half more than in the current year. We've been very successful each year in stepping that up. One million of that is general fund capital, so it is true general fund cash capital. 500,000 of that is coming from your gateway fund specifically to add on top of money to be spent inside Loop 289. That money will be in a separate capital account. It will have separate accounting so that you're able to show where and how those dollars were used. Moving down to your vehicles, equipment, other capital programs, we have just under $92 million in total capital improvements for fiscal year '24. 23 projects, 14 are cash funded. The largest part of the capital for next year are the 2022 bond election projects and you see the list of those. So that'll be step two in the bond. There are two projects for solid waste. These will be fee-supported debt, the second and last installment at the transfer station, and it is time to start on the new cell at your large landfill at Abernathy, and then 428,000 from the remaining ARPA going to Parks and Recreation for playgrounds. Continuing on, we have 57 vehicles proposed in the budget. 93% of those are cash. You do have tax notes on two of those vehicles. Fire suppression, solid waste, two of our one grader, one loader for alley maintenance, a large scraper machine to go to the landfill, and a roll-off truck. Note down below, the 57 vehicles we have in this budget does not include the 42 vehicles that we pre-purchased back in June, and of course, those also were all cash-funded vehicles. Talking about investing in our city employees, we do have a 4% COLA proposed both for civil service and for non-civil service. And staff very much appreciates discussion that the council had when you challenged us to go back and to find that. Health benefits, the city is absorbing the majority again of the healthcare cost increase. So the city's allocation changes by plus 10%. Employee retiree allocation by plus 2%. If you look down on that chart on there, I think you can see this is still a very good deal for our employees. Council, we have heard you as far as we need to continue to evaluate some changes in the future, not for this, but in the future. And you'll hear more from me on that when we get out of budget season. Employee education assistance, remember you funded for us in the current year the first part of that. We are asking to allocate 500,000 also of ARPA again to continue to do that. The program is starting to gain interest quite rapidly. I hope that we spend out every one of these dollars on behalf of our employees. Few other things on the next page. CDL apprentice program, we've talked about that many times. It has been very successful. We want to continue doing that. Our summer field apprentice program also was successful. That was brand new. We weren't exactly sure where it would land. It landed in a good spot. We want to keep doing that. Council, with the proposed budget, we're going to try something different in Parks and Recreation. So we are taking a number of the full-time positions that are extremely difficult to fill and converting those on a dollar basis into part-time hours that we can spend. Mr. Van Gundy and his team put this together. I think they've come up with a pretty interesting way to try to get this work done and get people paid. In the middle, you see the education assistance program, CDL training. That's for an existing employee that is in a position where they can promote or advance if they get a CDL and we'll make that possible. Off to the right, some new programs we're working on modeled after summer field would be summer office apprentice program for the following year. Some flexible work schedules for office workers and moving our vacation accrual or annual leave to a proportional basis instead of a once-a-year lump basis. And this is actually the number one request I get from new employees. If they're hired in January, they don't get their vacation until the next January. This basically will allow them to accrue those hours the same way they do sick leave. So I think it's going to be a good deal to do that. Okay, moving now to great big numbers coming across here. We look at the top, that is your general fund. You see that the current year's general fund total budget, the column that says FY '22, '23, come across that, it's $278,667,000. The new year budget is proposed at $287,900,000. Council would, this is on the revenue side, so you can see where that is. We'll do the expense in just a moment, but the revenue change is 8.3. Enterprise funds, change of 5.1 and then, I'm sorry, that was internal service, and then your enterprise funds at the bottom. All in, your city budget is proposed to go down from $1,369,460,000 in the current year to $968,919,000. So it's about a 6.6 reduction. And council, the largest part of that reduction is with Lubbock Power and Light. Remember, they ran up some capital projects for the following, for the prior year that they don't need next year, plus it respects the transition to competition. Moving over, this is just a graphical look at all of your funding sources. And move now to the expense summary. So again, back at the top on the general fund, again, you see the 8.342 million dollar change. Council, note that of that, 10.6 million is actually an increase to public safety. So for non-public safety general fund, we are actually coming down year over year and we're investing more into public safety. And as you look across here, you can see how the rest of it balances out, taking us back to that number. Okay? And the same information in pretty pictures. Here's another chart. We put this in when we did the very last of our budget workshops, but this is the cost per capita adjusted for inflation on your general fund. So this actually takes down the cost to operate your general fund to per-person level. For fiscal year '24, that's $907 per person. Note that that is less fiscal year '17, fiscal year '16, and only slightly above fiscal year '15. So I think we've worked hard to try to be a good value to our public. Another way to look at this, again, we're strictly on the general fund. The blue bars is our non-public safety part of the general fund, again, adjusted per capita for inflation. The green is your investment in public safety per capita adjusted for inflation. So you see here, we're actually $3 per person less on non-public safety and we're slightly more, about $22, for our public safety. So when we talk again about that change, the net change in the general fund, here's where it is. Let me see that. Property tax, now we get into all the fun language we have to say and that you will have to consider later today. So the state required language says this budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $11.825 million or 11.33%. Of that amount, $3.794 million is tax revenue from new property added to the rolls. So value that was not on your tax roll in the prior year, and you have to subtract those numbers to get back to where we've been talking. So this proposed rate is a tax increase. The rates work this way. Total tax rate or tax year 2023, no new revenue rate, is 46.5391 cents per hundred. The voter approval tax rate, so this is the maximum number you can go to without going to an election, would be 48.26 cents. We do have what's called an unused increment. So these are prior years to where we did not go to the voter approval tax rate, but rather did no new revenue last year, less than three and a half before that. That has built an increment in the equivalent amount of 2.3 cents. And so if you add those together, it's 50.57. We are nowhere near that number. Your proposed tax rate is in bold in the middle of the page, 48.0164 cents per hundred. You see the values down below that. You also see the change in the over 65 exemption. And the short version of this is for the second year in a row, we had a double-digit percent increase in the value of what's on the tax rolls. Council, I know you're aware, but for anybody else that's listening, this governing body has nothing to do with what the values are. That is set by the Lubbock Central Appraisal District. Break all this out into the pieces that we have shown you before. Council, if you do adopt the budget the way we have proposed changing the methodologies, you'll no longer see that piece in the middle, the economic development piece, but we started that way, so we want to keep it that way. You can see where the $11.8 million ends up going. Largest piece, of course, to the general fund, next largest to your debt service, and a bit in the economic development. What is the impact on the average home? So the average single-family residential home in Lubbock would see a $103.38 increase in their property tax bill. That is most largely influenced by the fact that the value of the average single-family home in Lubbock went up by $20,000 year over year. So you see those numbers below you there. Almost to the end. So we were asked several times, where does the change in the property tax rate, the increase, where does that go? You have mathematically a 1.48 cent proposed tax rate increase. The value of the change to the general fund, and again, pretty much all but the street maintenance is public safety, the value of what you're getting is 3.2 cents or $100. To the right, you see the 1% civil service raise, to get it to the four, street maintenance at a million, the six Lubbock police officers we're adding, the 20 Lubbock Fire Rescue that we're adding, plus the body camera project for the police department. Those will add up to the 3.2 cents of increase, but we're asking you rather to approve a 1.48 cent increase. Hope that made some sense. Comparable city rates and how those are changing with their unused increments, you see Lubbock just barely to the left of Laredo there. You see quite a difference when you look at the competitive set of cities. And I think maybe that this one will help. So we're trying to find a way to normalize general fund revenue. You always hear comments about, well, but we have a sales tax that buys down property tax. That is true. Many other cities do as well. We also talk about what does sales tax generate because both sales and property will fund your general fund. Whether that sales tax goes to buy down property tax or it is revenue, it still all is part of your general fund and it's what funds you. So if you look, we're just one to the right of Arlington, so we're just to the right of the middle on this chart. The blue, the light blue bar, that is how much sales tax per penny per capita generates to a city. And then the green is that maintenance and operations portion of the property tax. Illustrate, look at Frisco on the far left. Frisco generates $20.70 for every penny per capita off of their sales tax. Their economy is solely built and designed to do that and that's why you see that. Look all the way to the right at El Paso and you see that that sales tax there is generating 3.4 to come back to them. Lubbock, $9.35, $8.14 on the tax rate, but as you compare left and right, you'll see that. I've shown this to some places. I've been asked, well, why is Amarillo's number 15.38 and Lubbock's is 9.35? It's not that there's a larger economy in Amarillo. It is that Lubbock does not get the full 2% that's available locally. Remember, in Lubbock County, they receive a portion of the sales tax. That is a portion that is not available to the city. That is not the case in Amarillo and in several other of the cities that we see on here. But I hope this kind of normalizes it. It's still a lot of numbers, you know, that stack up. The dark colored bar to the right of each of those two shows you the equivalent tax rate for the various cities. Mayor, with that, I will stop and take questions or be quiet.
Counsel, I would propose that we just go ahead and do the public hearings and then we, as we get into discussion, we have Jared available with the presentation. Is that all right? All right. Well, then we will move to 3.1. This will be the hold of the public hearing on the proposed budget. So at this time, we will hold a public hearing on the proposed 23, 24, can't believe I'm already saying 2024, operating budget and capital program. Again, when you step forward, just like citizen comments, if you step forward, please state your name and your address and then you will be able to speak on the operating budget proposed. So at this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone wishes to speak, you may step forward now.
Michael Ward, 5417 Eighth Street. I'm glad you went over all of the details because rather than repeating a lot of the things that you've talked about, I want to deal some more with some of the things that might help in the future. I sort of do a helicopter look at things sometimes. Of course, we have increased revenue of $11.8 million with new property at $3.8 million and a total budget just under the billion, and I understand the LPNL part. What I want to concentrate on though are my concerns about actions and consequences. Most department functions well and employees deserve pay increases. I do suggest a little less than 4% for those making over $100,000. Inflation is hurting everyone, but it definitely hits the lower-paid folks and that's important as well. Especially those of us on fixed incomes have trouble with a lot of this, but I want to deal a little more with my favorite topic for the last 35 or 40 years. And that's, this mantra, if we're not growing, we're dying, is said over and over without thinking through it very well. It's used to rationalize all the questionable actions that are taken. And of course, artificially stimulated growth for quote-unquote economic development. Sounds great and these things are rolled out all the time with all of the positives and all the people that are coming and how much they're investing and all sorts of things, but we're never really looking at the rest of the story of what we're paying to do that. And I want to also tie that together somewhat because we really have a lot of additional costs to taxpayers for a lot of the infrastructure, of course, the street bonds, public safety, water and so forth. The bigger we get, the more cost it is and it's hard to do a cost-benefit analysis, but it's really important to keep that in mind as we're subsidizing a lot more people to come here and put in big businesses. This year in economic development, LITA, Lubbock Economic Development Agency or associate, is $25 million. The Market Lubbock part is estimated to be $7 million. And as I've said every year for the last 31 or so years, we voted the property tax part going to economic development completely out of our city budget in January of 1992 by 84%, and that included in the ballot the appropriations. It's never been removed and I'm glad it's not going to as pennies and hopefully we can save some in that area. So that's a plus I hadn't seen. It started out with 3 cents and has been that way a long time, just been decreases over the years, but I think we're reaching a point where particularly with what I'm fixing to talk about as far as the borrowing by LITA, and I know they have different purposes. There's things that you can't do under the LITA part that we adopted. I would never go for the other one because it would include all kinds of I would never go for the other one, because it would include all kinds of fun venues. It could also have been used for streets and saved us some money, but you can't risk it if there's fun toys to be considered in that. But, the, basically, they've added a lot more. I was so distressed, I guess, because I've thought all these years, my worst nightmare was that they could borrow money, and it was one of the most objectionable policies that was allowed in Article 5190.6. And, of course, that helps multiply funds and leverages revenue with debt. Of course, the debt's being paid back out of the 8-cent sales tax for 22 years, when I will be 100 years old and probably shaking my fist from the clouds somewhere. But, it's really important to consider that, because this has opened it up and to a lot more things. By the way, voters absolutely never approve open-ended economic development. It was always tied to the tax relief, or tax buy-down, and R2 of specific project, and immediately, within six months, we collected signatures and repealed that one. So, we went through six sales tax elections for that same half-cent. And so, when they were allowed to borrow $30 million, or over 30, I think it was capped at 32.5, but they borrowed a little over 30 million, which with interest for the next 22 years till 2043, will be $47 million, which is unbelievable. But, anyway, of course, I'll get into the tax trade part later. But, a few of the recent projects that sound really good, and they're a good fit, they have an agriculture component in some cases, they're not overlapping businesses already here for the most part, but we're giving away an awful lot of incentives on top of incentives for those. And they're never rolled out with the complete story, so the public thinks it's wonderful, and Daddy Warbucks out here just has a lot of money to share with whoever. But, we've bought over 1,000 acres that have been donated to two or three different, well, I guess, three so far, big corporations, some of them even international. La Prino is a wonderful thing, it's going to net some extra water out of the milk, so all of that. But, we did buy hundreds of acres, and the county also contributed some to that for, and then deeded the property over to them, along with putting in streets, probably East 19th, infrastructure, even, all kinds, including utilities and everything else. But, then we're, on top of that, when they finish, there's going to be $10,000 for each employee, up to 674 employees, to be paid, plus, and I can talk about it more on the tax side, but there'll be 100% tenure tax abatement from the city, and also from the county, I don't have their numbers, they don't keep track of this like you all do, but over the years till 2037, apparently that'll start about 2027, will be estimated at about a $20 million loss off our tax base. And then, another one, it sounds great that I've, my open records request on it was so large, Jana Johnston, who has been really helpful. These things are all public, you just have to ask for it, but she had to send it on a thumb drive. But, the Plant AS, which is the big greenhouse project, also sounds wonderful, we're needing improved production of our produce and other things. So, I've sort of said on both of those, if the economy goes completely to pot, we can eat lettuce and tomatoes and mozzarella cheese. So, anyway. On the Plant AS, though, there were 700 acres bought at a million dollars per acre from two different owners, for $7 million. And there, again, it was deeded over to the company, and then we're putting in all of their utilities and everything else they need in that regard. But, the other part, and I'm, it says provide, I'm hoping they're paying for it, but apparently they have to have 600,000 gallons of water per day. So, keep that in mind, because all these things cause us to have to go chase our planned but not put in yet water things. Some of the others are smaller, I've looked into the details on them, but WL Plastics is a huge corporation in 28 countries, and they were given 25 acres, and, of course, other things that go with it. Some of it's in the business part. And then, on May 23rd, you all added some things from Uraline and Conetrix lesser degree. But, when we're giving our land, our buying and giving away a lot of northeast Lubbock, it's concerning, and that's part of this. As far as the budget, I'd like to see it lower. There's ways that we can save. I think everybody's tried to find places to cut, but we've got to keep in mind in the future, you all do have a lot more control than you maybe exercise over market, I mean, LEDA. You have all the control over Market Lubbock, you can do away with it whenever you want to. But, Article 13 in the LEDA bylaws, and I had sent them to you, and I really felt better about this council, and yet you're the first ones that allowed a lot of borrowing. But, Article 13 says, "The city council may in its sole discretion and at any time alter or change the structure, organization, programs, or activities of the corporation, and it may terminate or dissolve the corporation, subject to the provisions of the Act," and all of that, go on and on. But, that means that you can't do anything to change direction sufficiently or in any great detail, other than hopefully, you can get better control of their pay and bonuses. It's a whole lot more than comparable people, not to get real personal about, but look into it, because it's, their director in 2022, with all of the bonuses and everything else, total compensation was close to $475,000, and that's 100,000-plus more than our city manager makes for a whole lot less work and employees under him. So, look into that, you do have control of that. It's a separate corporation, and often even people at the city have to file an open records request, and yet it's all completely taxpayer-funded. So, keep those things in mind. I just, I know in the future, there'll be other things coming, but there is a limit to how much more all of the rest of us that don't have a way to go out and make a lot more money can keep paying for the needed infrastructure and all these things that they're going to need. And I'll talk more about the abatement loss during the tax part, but do appreciate your time, and sorry to be so long. I always come once a year, because I'm not limited to three minutes, and I have a lot more to say than three minutes, so do appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
My name is Burley Owen, at 2734 Seventh Ninth Street. The purpose of my visit today here is to point out the plight of the average Lubbock citizens and concerns about what tough economic times they're facing, with increased inflation and increased cost of everything, including insurance on their house, increased cost of food and eating out, which is about 20%. So, I know that these are tough economic times that the city's facing, just like the rest of us, but I see no indication that the city is, let me put it another way, it looks like to me the city's still going full steam ahead with their foot on the gas pedal, with no thought of even taking the foot off the gas pedal, much less tapping the brakes a little bit. But for the average citizen in Lubbock, Moody Financial Services, who's a part of the bond rating service, just recently said, within the last two weeks, that it costs the average American household $720 more per month than it did two years ago to live on. That's pretty significant. And so, I'm hoping that you'll be sympathetic to the causes. We saw in early summer, the nonprofits like Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, Salvation Army, saying they were having financial difficulties. And, for example, the Food Bank said, at that point, they were only giving away half boxes of food, or formerly, they had given out full boxes of food. And I think part of that is because people are in such a financial bind that they are not contributing to the nonprofits like they have in the past. I see a little austerity in this budget. I think the increase in the spending is an indication of that. We seem to be satisfied with always having an increase without reducing the size or spending of government. And I don't think you can say this is a frugal budget. I think overall, it will reduce people's, or will increase people's cost of living. You're saying on average, house only $107, but you got to keep in mind that they also have increases from school taxes, county taxes, and other things, and, of course, with increasing prices, they're paying more in sales taxes. The last census showed that 19.4% of the people, households in Lubbock, live at or under the poverty level. To me, that's a pretty good chunk, as compared to the national percentage, it's only a little over 11%. So, you could say we're almost double the people living at or under the poverty level as even the national level. 12% of our population is the elderly. Those two added together come to 31.5%. That means the tax load is being put on about 2/3 of the people. And so, when you look at that, you're not looking at the whole total number of people. Yeah, you quoted per capita cost. Well, that's not, in my mind, a accurate reflection. I ran across this a while back, let's see if I can find the date. This is back in March of this year. There's a company called Wallet Hub, who does different types of studies. They did a study of 182 cities, in hopes of finding out where would be the best place to retire. In that list, they said they were able to only find one city in Texas, that they found one city in Texas that was not a good place to retire. Out of their study of 46 different factors, Lubbock rated 173 out of 182 cities. Do we want the reputation of not being a good place to retire? And you could also draw a conclusion from that, if it's not a good place for retired people, what about the general public and the general citizens in the city? So, we need to take that into consideration. I question the, and I always have questioned, the figures presented to the city about per capita. I'm glad to see the charts, that's an improvement, but the state comptroller always has different figures. And they rate Lubbock as one of the most, out of the 10, nine other cities our size, we're second in the amount of spending. When you get down below the top three, their spending, like Amarillo, and some others, are only about half of what our spending is. So, you have to ask why, is their spending per capita half of what ours is? So, there's lots of questions here, but I realize I'm late, and the horse is already out of the barn. But, keep these in mind as you go through spending for this year. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on Agenda Item 3.1? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 3.1, and we will move to Item 3.2. The council will now hold a public hearing on a proposed increase in total tax revenues from properties on the tax roll in the preceding tax year by 3.17%. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing?
Again, I'm still Michael Ward. On the tax rate, it doesn't take much to get down to the no-new-revenue rate. At $2 million per each penny, it would only take about $4 million out of almost billion-dollar budget to get there, and that would certainly be helpful. But, I wanted to point out why I needed this other information, because tax abatements, of course, are in addition to whatever LEDA does, and when you all approve a tax abatement for whatever years, whether it's 100% or declining, it lessens the tax base to be taxed and spreads that out for the rest of us to make up the difference. So, it's important to keep up with that as well, and Cheryl Brock's been keeping up with that with, for me, for about 20-some-odd years, probably, but I do appreciate it. There are several of them right now, and, of course, they, some of them don't start until they finish the projects, but, of course, the one that bothers me the most was Monsanto, which didn't need any help, wasn't hiring very many people, but it was 100% on absolutely everything from 2019 to 2028, at an estimated cost of 5.5 million. United has a declining one, I think, for 10 years that finishes up in 2026 on a warehouse. We often make these into enterprise zones, that's what happened with Monsanto. We bought 150 acres, gave it to them, and told me that they were going to pay lots of taxes, and then they immediately made them into an enterprise zone and gave them that 100% for 10 years on everything. that 100 percent for 10 years on everything. But at least United's is declining, and in 2026, it's estimated that that will be about 560,000. It's based on the amount that they're investing or what we're abating the taxes on. And that's just the city's portion. You have to double it plus a little for the county, and we get to pay both of those mostly. La Prino has not started yet, but when it does, approximately when they finish their building of their things and all their equipment and everything, it will run from 2027 to 2037 at a loss to the tax base of about $20 million all totaled, about two or three million per year. And it's also 100 percent. That's just the city's part. X Fab is not a big problem. It's a declining five-year, starting in 2027, and it's only about 2.8 million. But just keep in mind that these are always shifted to the rest of the taxpayers, and the county and hospital district, everything but the school district puts money into that. The other thing I want to comment about the taxes, I didn't comment on it earlier, but of course, I call the Funding Source Summary General Fund page the magic page. And over the years, since Blais has been here, he's got it all outlined on one page, all of the, what I call the hidden utility taxes. So there's the in lieu of franchise fees on the utilities is about $21 and a half million projected. The pilot, which is the in lieu of property taxes on our utilities, is about $11 million. Transfers, which is one more way of taxing it all, is 5.4 million. And then the Citizens Tower debt is not on this page, but there's another page outlining that. And the utilities, mostly LPNL, are based on how much room they take up in Citizens Tower, but it's about 1.4 million for the debt service that comes out of our utilities. So altogether, it's about $39.3 million and makes up a pretty good chunk, probably close to 15 percent of the general fund budget. Also, when we were talking about sales tax, it's amazing how much money it generates. And an eighth of a cent, which is $9 million currently, and it's always sort of underprojected, so I doubt if it'll stay flat unless people just can't pay for a lot of things with the interest rates, what they are and everything else. But projected for 23, 24, the sales tax is generating a little over $98 million, where property tax is generating about a little over $85 million. So it's 11.3 million more in sales tax than property tax. We're always looking at the property tax end of things, but that sales tax is really important. And one of the reasons that a lot of us fought really hard to get the 3/8 cents or the half cent that was available for property tax reduction, and I think we are unique, some of them have traded it other ways, but the economic development sales tax allowed us to buy down, and we did it in two different elections, in '95 and 2003, all but an eighth of it. And that on the appraisal district, and of course, we don't really seem to get our whole $9 million, it runs through a little bit of a division process, but right now, it is 12.4 cents less on our tax rate. And that's a lot of difference. And one of the things I'm the proudest of keeping on fighting for, for all those things. And I wanted to just comment briefly, I didn't even turn my paper over a while ago, so I won't make another speech, but we're always, everybody's always interested in our image and all sorts of things. And we've been working on an image campaign and logo and all this stuff since 2020. I remember telling them right after the pro-life vote that we'd already created a good image for Lubbock of the largest pro-life city in the country, and I think that still holds. It's completely the way it needs to be. But we've been working on this logo and image from 2020 to 23, and I thought the chamber and some other people were putting money to it, but there was an article the other day that said, now we've tweaked it, and all it is is LBK, however you want to design it. But to take three years to figure out a symbol or logo for us at a cost of, it said, $4,000. So I'm still waiting on some open records request on some of these outside consultants, and hopefully you all won't get deeper into some of those. There's some that are ongoing, and a lot of them was millions of dollars, but hopefully that's slowing down and maybe not continuing. But we need to work on our things locally and not worry about people coming in and grand planning things that then we can't afford to do. And they go back, they don't really care about Lubbock. And one of them in particular that's important was the downtown Overland Partners. We spent about $440,000. And then TBG Partners, which is also in San Antonio, came in and designed the four little green squares for the, actually, it was three, and then they added a black slimy one if you didn't want it, for the civic park. And altogether, we paid, on that one downtown thing, mostly paid out of the CBD TIF, about $670-something thousand. And that's rather insane. We have lots of talent here. We don't need to pay people to come in and tell us what we need to do. And yet, the site that I thought was ridiculous to tear down, very usable and probably a good thing to get back on the tax roll, 65,000 square foot building and parking garages, demolished to the ground. And I don't know when we'll have the private money raised to do that, but that's just another commentary. So be careful with hiring outside consultants. We have lots of talent in Lubbock, and we don't need them coming in and telling us what to do. Do appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Anyone else wishing to speak on Agenda Item 3.2?
Michael touched on one subject that's a burr under my blanket, and that is tax abatements. It's my understanding up until Monsanto, tax abatements have always been for a 10-year declining period. In other words, they go down, they wouldn't pay anything the first year, they would pay 10 percent the second year, 20 percent, the thinking being that as they grew, they could afford to pay more money. And since that time, almost exclusively, we've given 100 percent tax abatements. And in my opinion, and I'll be blunt, I consider that cheating the citizens of Lubbock by not making them pay something. And in line with that, if you give them 10 years straight abatements at the 11th year, they have greatly depreciated the value of that equipment. So we will not get near as much money as we would have gotten the first, second, and third, fourth year. And I urge you not to give 10-year abatements to these companies coming in here. You may say it has to be because we need to be competitive. Well, I'd say if we're not competitive at a declining tax abatement rate, then we let them go. We can do without them. But when you're not letting that money come in to help the taxpayers pay the city's bills, I think that's cheating them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Anyone else wishing to speak on Agenda Item 3.2? All right, I'll close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 3.2. We will move to Agenda Item 3.3. The Texas Local Government Code requires a public hearing be conducted by the city in regard to the proposed stormwater drainage decrease. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item on the proposed rate for stormwater, you may approach at this time.
I don't ever get to speak three times. Do appreciate it. I'm really glad that you're finally lowering those slightly, 60 cents, I think, on the base amount. But there again, there's a lot of history. This was started in '92, '93 to test the runoff for the EPA. And I had a good friend in my taxpayer group that was on the committee, and they said at the time, you could do it for 50 cents, but if we made it $1.50, we'd never have to go up on it at all. Of course, in the interim, then, we found that a lot of bad planning had happened. We're not doing that anymore, thanks to Mike Keenum and some of the other guys. We're not building big structures in the middle of Playa Lakes, but we've had a lot of cost incurred to do that. And the part that has rolled off was really not supposed to ever be there. There was a lawsuit over it, never dealt with, except that they said on every step of the way that home rule cities didn't have to follow the dictates of the Texas Government Code that was Subchapter C and Article 50, 552, I think. But it was supposed to be strictly for drainage. And over four years, from 2008 to '12, there was $10 million a year borrowed for street repair. And thank you, Jarrett, that we're not doing that anymore. We're paying cash, which makes a whole lot more sense. But that was borrowed by a council. And I guess why I don't fault every council, because they inherit some strange previous decisions, but I want to caution them about doing anything like that in the future. So I don't mean to sound mother hen-y, but that's what I do. Anyway, that street repair debt added up to 40 million, and it was a 10-year CO. We don't do as many of those either anymore, so that's a good thing, limited. But over that time, we had to pay all of that off. Plus, about '04, '05, they started adding the franchise fees and pilot, which is also not really supposed to be there, but they added into that budget in '04, '05 to add the 5 percent franchise fee. And I don't know how you determine what property they're relying on to figure out the property tax part of that. That's another whole strange issue. But in about 2015, well, it was actually looked at about 2012 by a citizen committee, which included two of the council women that were in that committee. But it was implemented in January of 2015 based on impervious surface, which took a huge jump. The budget that year went from about a little over $19 million to $25 million, and larger houses went from about $14 million to almost $26 or $27. And businesses, of course, went up considerably. Everything that's non-homes, I guess, including churches and nonprofits and all sorts of things that had large impervious areas, took a huge hit. And every time you tax something tremendously or charge for things, it just leaves less money in our pockets to create our own businesses and do those kinds of things. So in that one year, when it started in 2015, and it's been that way ever since, it went from $93 per meter for commercial and largest area folks. And the top rate went up to $695, which was almost cost prohibitive. I created a whole lot of people around me at the time that were fighting that and seeing how they couldn't even keep their churches open with what they were being charged. So I appreciate any little bit off of that, but in the future, consider lessening the franchise fees because the three, other than LPNL that pays into Gateway 2 percent of it, the others are all charged 5 percent also, and they don't contribute to Gateway. And the 3 percent would be a lot more equitable on the rest of them if you're going to tax those. But I just thought I'd mention a little bit of the history on that because we've got a lot of debt still left going out quite a ways, probably into '37 or '38 on these other drainage projects. But we're doing much better not building in the middle of Playa Lakes. And we've got to be careful, though, everything that we cover up, all the farmland as we grow south even, we've got to be really aware of the drainage before things are put in so we're not having to retrofit and bring in several hundred, or cost several hundred million dollars to redo it and pay for it for many, many years. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Anyone else wishing to speak on 3.3? All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 3.3. We will move to Agenda Item 3.4. The council will now vote on Item 3.4, which is the proposed 2324 operating budget and capital program. Is there a motion to approve the 2324 budget? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, I'll have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Mr. Mayor, I just, number one, to let Ms. Ward know I was thinking, listening to her, and just wanted to strike a conversation as to comments she made regarding 4 percent for some of the lower-paid or entry-level staff and a lower rate for those making the higher marks, which I believe we did similarly on last year. Am I correct?
That is correct, ma'am. We did it two years in a row, to where the lower-wage employees got a much higher percentage and the higher-paid employees got a lesser percentage.
I just wanted to bring that up for maybe conversation with the other council members and some consideration about that, if they'd like to have some say or further discussion.
Mr. Biggert?
Yeah, I still think that's a valid consideration, given the status of taxpayers, citizens in our city that are facing difficult situations, difficult, many of them are not getting those kinds of raises. And of course, the lower end of the pay scale, that kind of an increase does a whole lot for those people. It makes up for a lot of the pressure that is put on them by the rising costs, as Mr. Owen said. I think I saw that same figure he did. Average household over the past two years has, inflation has increased their cost about $709 a month. That's about $8,500 a year. The average household income in Lubbock is about $75,000. So that's more than a 10 percent hit that they've taken because of inflation, even though their incomes have gone up less than 5 percent. So I think we always have to be concerned about, not just our citizens, but people who work for our city, who maybe make less than $100,000. That increase is very important to them, but I do feel like we pay at the upper levels of our city very well, and we get what we pay for at the upper level. I am not about here. Every employee of the city that I have met with and worked with does a fantastic job. So this is not about anything, they're not doing their job, they're not worth it. But we're in tough times, and a budget doesn't exist in a vacuum. It exists in an economic reality, the reality our citizens face. And so I would also be in favor of capping above $100,000, the increases at $4,000, which would be 4 percent, but that anybody making more than But that anybody making more than $100,000 a year, their increase would be capped at $4,000. So, that would be something that I would like to propose as a, something that we need to look at in our budget. I'm also a little bit concerned...
Mr. McBrayer?
Yes?
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Are you proposing an amendment at this time? Let me see if I can try to nutshell that. Are you proposing an amendment where all employees that make less than $100,000 a year would receive a 4% pay increase, cost of living increase, whatever you would call it, and anyone making over $100,000 would receive none?
Anyone over $100,000 would receive a $4,000 pay increase, which is 4%, nothing above that. So, that's what I would propose. But I'm not proposing it as an amendment at this time, because I think I'll wait and see how the budget vote goes.
All right. Any, Ms. Joy, I just, I don't have a button there. I want to make sure I'm not missing you up there. Any discussion at this point?
I'm here, Mayor. Much that I've heard today, I agree with, coming from the citizens. But I think you have to look at the picture as a whole. It's hard to make a decision on one aspect without affecting another. I'm not sure on the issue of capping the 4%. I am not real sure whether or not we can even do that, and I would have to defer that to legal.
All right, are there any other discussion on that specific issue brought up by Ms. Patterson-Harris and Mr. McBrayer? Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I just want to say that, if I'm not, if I'm correct, Jarrett, did you say that for two years, anyone above $100,000 did not get an increase? I thought...
Let me restate that, and it was not...
Or they didn't get a...
There wasn't a cut line. The way that worked is we took the pay scales, and then we turned the percentage part of it upside down. So, if you took your lower, I believe it was five, if we take a break, I can look it up and tell you exactly. But I think the lower five or six pay rates got 8% or better. And at the top end, the higher pay rates, which certainly would be everybody's over $100,000, but it was broken into two different tiers. I think one year is low as 3.75 on that. So, the lower scale doubled the higher scale.
I think this year, it's been tough for everybody, no matter what level of income that you're making. Well, probably for some more than others, like Steve. But our employees deserve a little bit of an increase across the board. So, you know, I don't think that we should hold anybody accountable for making a little bit more. I think everybody is deserving, and this year, with no doubt, is one of the years that we need to make sure that we step up for all of our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Dr. Wilson?
I agree with Councilwoman Martinez-Garcia. You know, being where we sit today, a lot of things happen behind the scenes at the city that citizens don't see. And our upper-level staff work tirelessly, hours outside of eight to five, and so do our lower-level staff. And everybody deserves to feel like they were compensated fairly for that extra time and all of the effort that the city staff puts in, whether they are new entry employees all the way to the top. And so, I also agree, I think it should be a fair 4% across the board.
Mr. Massengill?
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with the equitable raise. First, I want to clarify that there hadn't been an amendment put forth on the dice, this is just discussion. Second, I would have a lot of questions about that, specifically how that would affect our first responders. I'm not sure how that would work with that. You know, the only other thing I would say is there's, a comment was made about the 4%. And, you know, there's a lot of businesses in this community that would love to have only had to deal with 4% inflation on their payroll this year. And so, I think you have to keep all that in mind, you know, as you're, everyone's trying to make payroll and everyone wants to be in a position to, you know, express gratification, you know, express appreciation, rather, to staff. I mean, 4%, in my opinion, is not out of the realm of reason.
All right. Is, seeing no other discussion on that specific topic brought up by Ms. Patterson-Harris, is there any further discussion? Questions of Mr. Atkinson on agenda item 3.1? Mr. McBrayer?
I have a further question about the sales tax that we proposed to have come into our budget this year. I know it's, I think you said it was 2.5% above the end of year, or '23, or the estimated end of year '23. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The proposed budget is the end of this fiscal year, so it'll be the end of September, plus 2.5%.
And could you just go through again how you arrived at that? Since it's so much lower than the years before, what are you looking at to come up with that figure?
Yeah, the, we get a monthly report for not just us, but for the top 20 cities in Texas. So, everybody knows sales tax is paid when you purchase an item. It actually all goes to the state, and then the state turns around and remits back to the locality, their portion of it. So, it's a great economic parameter. That data's never more than a month old, whereas if you're looking at tax values, that's pretty much going to be a year old. We began to see that coming down in our January collections, so our rate of increase was somewhat steep, and we saw it coming down. The last three months of our actual collections, net of inflation, is flat. 0.3% actual change.
That's three months flat?
For the last three months, it's been right there.
Do you know what it has been for the year? I mean, is there a figure, a percentage over the year?
Overall, we're looking at about an 8% year-over-year change?
That was just, my question was, I think we've taken a very conservative view towards estimating our sales tax. But of course, what that estimate is can affect the tax rate that we impose on people.
It can, yes.
And so, that was just one of the other areas I thought might be an opportunity for us to look at adjusting our budget, maybe not to get down to the known net revenue rate, but to lower it, to lower the effect on people, if we might consider that. The other question I had for you had to do with our reserves and how we handle our reserves. And I have a little bit of a theory that may not be shared by everybody, but you build up your reserves during good times, but sometimes you have to use them during tough times. And I, again, that's my position. We're in a rather tough time for our citizens. And again, the citizens of Lubbock don't work for the city. The city works for the citizens of Lubbock. It's their economic reality we have to take into effect. Is there any room, do you think, in, we're in pretty good shape with our reserves, are we not?
We are. I would, we are spending significantly out of the reserves for the proposed budget.
This year?
We are. We're going to end, and I'm trying to flip while I talk, and I'm not that good at doing that. If you give me a moment, I'll give you the actual numbers that are related to that. You have two components always of a reserve. Blue, I may have to get you to plug in and pull up our reserve sheet. Two components to your reserve. You have a required reserve, a minimum that you have to keep, and that, of course, varies by your different departments or different funds. Second, then, you put dollars available to do things. The number-one thing we do with reserves over what we're required to have is fund the following years' street maintenance and cash. That's how we've been able to go from borrowed money to cash money and still increase it. So, if you use this year's number, we need to have $13 million of what we call excess reserves in place to fund street maintenance next year. Number two, anything that comes up in the year that we've run across, we didn't have it this year, a year before, it was vehicles. We had to buy extra and bought those with cash. You also, throughout the course of a year, are going to have many of your capital projects. Upland and 66th was a good example of one that actually escalated beyond the ability to do that, even with the reserves we held. So, that's what's pushed forward into your next year's budget. Another example, two meetings ago, we started approving the project that allow us to get parts of South Quaker aid. The city will only be on the hook for 30 cents on the dollar to do that, but we have the cash, is roughly $2 million, to be able to do that from those excess reserves. So, we do have healthy numbers, but I don't think that they're out of line. And certainly, if we pull them down too far, my biggest fear is being able to fund what you need to do in the following year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Atkinson? Any other discussion on 3.4? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Not so much a discussion, but I did want to thank our citizens for public speaking and voicing their concerns. I never want them to think that we've not at least taken into consideration some of the things that they present to us. And, Ms. Ward, it was good to see you today and to hear from you, and I wanted to make sure that we did indicate that we were listening and wanted to hear, I wanted to hear from the other council members in regard to that consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Yes, and Michael says she won't be here in another 22 years. I disagree. I think you will be. As to the budget, you know, I want to take into that consideration as well, and I agree with many of those things brought up by Burley and by Michael. One thing I will point out, we did a pretty lengthy study as far as our ISO-1 rating. This new fire station is going to help us with our ISO-1 rating. This will, in fact, decrease insurance costs for the average citizen. I think in total, we look at a 6.6% decrease on the budget. I don't think you see that most of the time. We're seeing a decrease in the budget. Regardless, if you look at the pennies that it goes up, we're still decreasing the budget. We're paying cash. We've seen a good precedent by former councils setting that, cash payments. We're reducing the stormwater rate. I think people gloss over that. This is a reduction. As debt service rolls off, we're doing what we said we would do. And this budget calls for 18 new firefighters, six new police department, and the entire $2.6 million body cam system. Jarrett, if you'd pull up slide 19. And I think this is what the focus is for many of us, is this is where it's going. $2.6 million for body-worn cameras, the 20 new firefighters, the LPD officers. That's where this increase comes. And we've said as a council many times that public safety is going to be our number-one priority, and this is where this increase is going, including a decreased budget with the incentives and the new additional increase in officers and public safety officers. Lubbock supports public safety. They always have, and I believe they always will. And that's, and I think the citizens of this community support when you show them where it's going and where it's going directly to our public safety component of our city. I think the old saying was, "You can't have good talent on the football field. You can't have good Xs and Os without Jims and Joes." And I think that comes to my position on our increase in salaries at 4% across the board and an increase in salaries for our police department, first responders. It's important that we maintain good talent. I know there have been people that have looked to leave. We've been able to keep them, and we need that good talent in our city, because it makes us more efficient in core services across the board. I don't look at this budget and see there's a lot of fluff. I think this focuses on public safety and core services, and I will vote to approve this budget. So, with that, I guess seeing no other comments or questions or discussion, we have a motion in a second on agenda item...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Ms. Joy.
I'm trying to get on, okay? I have one question for the city manager.
Okay, you're up.
The changes that you have in the budget that you proposed as an effects Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, can you give us an example of how that would work, or some specifics about how it would change from dollars that we are currently committing?
Yes, ma'am. Glad to do that. Today, or prior to today's new budget, there was a cents per $100 component that was pulled out of your tax rate. That is not a state requirement. There's not actually a state component for that. It was a local way of saying each year that Market Lubbock would get whatever the equivalent dollars was. At one time, it was three cents. It slowly come down, and that's what they got. Therefore, that number, the dollars represented by that number, went up just as your valuations go up each and every year. That was not going up in relation to what the programmed expenses were. So, if you look at all of the departments and the divisions of the city, we don't budget by saying, "Okay, next year, there's going to be a plus 13% new revenue. Bring me a budget." We instead sit and work through an expense budget, a plan of service, and say, "Here's what it's going to cost for that department," and then we allocate our revenue towards that. This will put the Market Lubbock budget on that exact same basis as the other city departments.
I guess what I'm asking is in terms of a dollar amount, if you compare what was received by LITA for this year compared to what you would anticipate would be received in the next budget year?
So, and we're focused on Market Lubbock. We don't change any of the LITA...
Understood.
...LITA dollars. Year-over-year, so current year to the new year, the Market Lubbock change went up by just a hair under 3%. Whereas if it had been pegged strictly on those tax rate calculations, it would have been significantly more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Joy?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, I have a motion in a second on 3.4. Do we want to move this Jimmy to vote? Ms. Joy, I'll probably just have you indicate your vote verbally, since we're going to vote on 3.4 with our buttons. All in favor of approval of 3.4, please indicate yes. All in not-favor, indicate no.
Aye.
All right? All right. Motion carries 6-1. We will next move to 3.5. Council now vote on agenda item 3.5, the tax rate ordinance. Is there a motion? Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .480164, which is effectively a 3.17% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Is there any discussion on agenda item 3.5? All right, all in favor of approval of 3.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries 6-1. We will now move...
I'm voting for. I'm just a little behind you guys.
Yes, ma'am. I got that, Ms. Joy. That carried 6 to 1. Thank you. All right, we will now move to 3.6. This is Consider Resolution Amending the Schedule of Drainage Charges by Decreasing the Stormwater Rate. Is there a motion to approve 3.6? Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Is there any discussion or any questions of staff or Mr. Atkinson on 3.6? All in favor of approval of 3.6, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, just before the meeting is over, just a friendly...
Mr. Mayor, just before the meeting is over, just a friendly reminder about making the announcement about the second read on the budget.
I have that, yes, sir. Public announcement. For purposes of the record, the city council will vote on the tax rate on a second and final reading on September 12, 2023, at City Council Meeting in City Council Chambers at 1314 Avenue K, beginning at 2:00 p.m. That's next week. And with that, it is 3:30. We will, if you'd care to, you can join us for a special recognition ceremony that will begin at 4:00. And other than that, we are adjourned.